Good afternoon and welcome to the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. At this time, we ask that you please place phones on vibrate or silent mode. Thank you Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon and welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. I am Councilmember Kevin Riley, Chair of the Subcommittee. This morning, I am joined by Councilmember Abreu, Hanks, Carr, Wan, Schulman, Botcher, and remotely by Councilmember Moya. Today, we will vote on two rezoning proposals in Queens and hold public hearings for three rezoning proposals: one in Queens, one in the Bronx, and one in Brooklyn. Before we begin, I recognize the Subcommittee Council to review the hearing procedures.
Thank you Chair Riley, I am Angelina Martinez, Reveal Council to the Subcommittee. This meeting is being held in hybrid format, so members of the public who wish to testify may testify in person or via Zoom. Members of the public wishing to testify remotely may register even now by visiting the New York City Council website at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up. Or, for those of you here in chambers, please see one of the sergeants to fill out the one of these lists, so just make sure you include your LU number or your project name so we can put you in the right item. Members of the public may also view a livestream broadcast of this meeting at the Council's website. When you are called to testify before the Subcommittee, if you are joining us remotely, you will remain muted until recognized by the Chair or I to speak. When the Chair or I recognize you, your microphone will be unmuted. Please take a moment to make sure your device is unmuted before you begin speaking. We will limit public testimony to two minutes per witness and Councilmember questions to five minutes. If you have additional testimony you would like the Subcommittee to consider, or if you have written testimony you would like to submit, instead of appearing before the Subcommittee, please email it to landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number and/or project name in the subject line of your email. We request that witnesses joining us remotely remain in the meeting until excused by the Chair as Councilmembers may have questions. Finally, there will be pauses over the course of this hybrid meeting for various technical reasons, and we ask that you please be patient as we work through any issues. Chair Riley will now continue with today's agenda items.
Thank you Council. Today, we will vote to approve Preconsiders LU 183 for the 24-245-06 South Conduit Avenue Commercial Overlay Proposal in majority whip Brooks Powers District in Queens. This proposal would map as C2-3 zoning district within an existing R3-2/C1-3 zoning district and bring an existing tire shop into the performance with zoning. Majority whip Brooks Powers is in support of this application. We will also approve with modifications Preconsiders LU 181 for the 25-46 Far Rockaway Boulevard rezoning also in majority whip Brooks Powers District in Queens. The proposal would rezonate existing R4-1 to an R6B zoning district and was originally filed with a related zoning text amendment to map an MIH program area. The Council's modification will be to change the proposed R6B district to an R5D district to better reflect the surrounding community character. We are also reducing the rezoning area in order to remove from the rezoning area a zoning lot that contains an existing school with no future plans for redevelopment. I will also note that the Council is in receipt of a letter from the applicant indicating withdrawal of the proposed text amendment, which is not applicable to R5D zoning districts. Therefore, pursuant to Council Rule 11.60B, Preconsiders LU 182 for the 25-46 Far Rockaway Boulevard zoning text amendment proposal is hereby withdrawn and the application is void. Majority whip Brooks Powers is in support of this proposal as modified. Members of the Subcommittee who have questions or remarks about today's item should use the raise hand button now or just indicate if you have a question. Council will announce members in the order that their hands are raised. Council, are there any Councilmembers with questions or remarks at this time?
I don't see any Councilmembers with questions at this time.
Thank you, Council you. I now call for a vote to approve Preconsiders LU 183 relating to the 245-06 South Conduit Avenue rezoning proposal. To approve with modifications I have described, Preconsiders LU 181 related to the 25-46 Far Rockaway Boulevard rezoning proposal and to file Preconsiders LU 182 also relating to the 25-46 Far Rockaway Boulevard rezoning proposal. Council, please call the roll.
Chair Riley.
Aye on all.
Councilmember Moya.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Abreu.
Aye on all.
Councilmember Botcher.
Aye on all.
Councilmember Hanks.
Aye on all.
Councilmember Schulman.
Aye on all.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye on all.
By a vote of seven and the affirmative, no negatives, no abstentions, the items are approved and will be referred to the full Land Use Committee, and I guess we will leave the vote open for now.
Thank you Council. I will now open the public hearing on Preconsiders LU 186, 187, and 188 relating to the 23-10 Queens Plaza South rezoning proposal in Councilmember Wan's district in Queens. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezonate existing M1-5/R9 zoning district to an M1-6/R9 zoning district, a related zoning text amendment to map an MIH program area, and a zoning special permit pursuant to the zoning resolution section 117-533 to modify the distance between buildings and streets, excuse me, buildings and street wall locations required, requirements. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online. You may do that now by visiting the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. Council, please call the first panel for this item.
If we could have the panelists for this item join us up front. And since I'm not sure I have all your names, could you please identify yourselves?
My name is Penny Lee.
Brad Jackson.
James Davidson.
Rick Perici.
So Chair, I will administer the affirmation.
I'm sorry, Rick, what was your name again?
Perici.
Perici.
P-A-R-I-S.
So if you could all raise your right hand and answer the following question: do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and any answers to all Councilmember questions? Thank you.
Thank you Council. For the viewing public, if you have an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask that you state your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Thank you very much, good afternoon. My name is Penny Lee, I'm a planning consultant, and I am here on behalf of Dynamic Star AHEs Holdings. I just want to note one thing for the record, though, when the three U-Loop items were read, there is no MIH application here. These are three U-Loop applications to facilitate a purely commercial development. The residential zoning is staying the same.
All right, we'll double check that, but thanks for correcting that on the record.
So, next slide, please. So, the three U-Loop applications are to rezone the property from M15R9 to M16R9, zoning text amendment to establish Area D within the Queens Plaza Subdistrict of the Long Island City Special District, and then establish within Area D FARs of 15 for commercial and manufacturing, 10 for community facility, and then the existing eight FAR for residential uses would remain the same. The text amendment would also establish heightened setback provisions for the new Area D. And then, the third application is a City Planning Commission special permit to modify the minimum distance between building requirements of Section 23711E and the street wall location requirements of Section 117531 of the zoning resolution. Next slide, please. This is an image of the existing zoning map identifying the site. The site is located in the red circle, and it's on the kind of the western edge of the Queens Plaza Subdistrict at the corner of 23rd Street and Queens Plaza South. Next slide, please. This image is more of a map to illustrate mass transit and public open space in proximity to the site. The site itself is identified with the red rectangle, and the subway station entrances are indicated with the blue text. So, for those of you looking at this, you can see that the red rectangle, which represents the building, is kind of equidistant from four subway stations: the F subway station at 21st Street Queensbridge, the 7, the N and the W at Queensborough Plaza, the E and the R and the M at Queens Plaza, and then down at Court Square, which has the same stations as Queens Plaza, you also get the G. So, there's a rich abundance of transit opportunities here. And then, the public open space shown here closest to the site is Queensbridge Baby Park, which is mapped parkland and leads to Queensbridge Park, which is an approximately 20-acre park on the East River waterfront. Next slide, please. This is an image, an aerial photo showing the site. There's a tall building next to the curvature represented by the ramp to the upper deck of the Queensborough Bridge with, excuse me, a low-rise loft building in front of that, which is the site itself. Next slide, please, which will illustrate the site much better. So, the top-left photograph is a close-up of the existing loft building that was formerly used by Eagle Electric. It's been vacant since approximately 2000. It's a bis-colored building, four stories in height. The top-left image is looking to the left towards 24th Street, which is southerly, and to the top of the image along Queens Plaza South, which is towards the east. The lower-right image is showing 24th Street, which forms the eastern edge of the site. You're looking southerly towards the Citibank Building. The building on the left is Apex Technical School. That building is to be enlarged and repurposed for a life science building. And then, the subject of these applications is the building to the right. The photograph in the lower-left is just showing greater context of Queens Plaza South. This is looking as if it's taken from the Queensborough Plaza subway station pedestrian bridge looking towards Manhattan. Next slide, please. These are historical images of the building. The top-left image is the Eagle Electric sign that used to be on the top of the building facing Manhattan. "Perfection is not an accident" is the Eagle Electric slogan. The two images in the middle are little inserts of the building details that will be preserved. The lower-left photograph is showing the building before, in its gray state. All of the Eagle buildings, I believe there were eight of them, were gray. It seemed to be the Eagle Electric color. And then, it was painted sometime after the building closed to the current color represented on the right. Next slide, please. This is a rendering of the building, showing the loft building in the lower ground floors, then a setback fifth story, and then the balance of the new construction. And we have the architect here who can go through the building in more detail. The existing loft building is around 105,000 square feet. The total amount of office space afforded by the text amendments is around 320,000 square feet. So, it will be around 26 stories in height, around 390 feet in height. Next slide, please. And this is a summary of the well certification program. Dynamic Star is seeking to have the building certified as a well-certified building. Dynamic Star is using CBRE as their leasing agent, and they run a well certification program. Well certification, if you're unfamiliar with it, is really designed and intended to ensure a very healthy building so that employees are able to kind of function in a clean and healthy, well-ventilated, well-circulated building that also has public open space, adequate accessory recreation facilities. It's really geared towards making a building that takes its employees at heart and makes sure they have a really productive working environment. Next slide, please. I think this is when I turn it over to Jim. Yeah, so I'm turning it now over to Jim Davidson, the project architect.
Good afternoon, thank you very much for having us. First slide with image. So, we were actually the developer, the developers' architects for the residential building that you see on the developed portion of the block, which are proposed, I'm sorry, how's this? Which our proposed building tends to build out. The residential is fully built on the site as an R9 with eight FAR. And if you walk the site today, and as we walked the site many years ago, we had always envisioned that the best use for this warehouse would be to revitalize it as an office/manufacturing kind of building and to activate the ground floor with uses that would help round out the needs of the neighborhood. You'll see today that there is a paucity of retail. The previous developers way back when didn't understand that, and we had always pushed, especially with our new client Dynamic Star, for active retail at all exposed facades at the ground floor. The other thing that we wanted to do, which we felt was very important, was to retain the aesthetic of that great historic manufacturing district building that you see today and to restore its facade, to replace the windows with the same aesthetic, but in a manner that would be, that would be energy efficient. And you'll see that there is a gap between the roof of the main, of the manufacturing building and the first floor of the office building portion that we're proposing that fills the entire site. The reason for that is that we felt very strongly that we wanted to keep the sense of the volume of the manufacturing district building, and then that space, which would be set back, would be used for open landscape space accessible to the community as well as the users of the office as well, also to have an active potential restaurant space there as well. Upstairs, we would have the full-floor office buildings, and then we would repeat that recess, as you see in this rendering, that would repeat the scale of the manufacturing building as it appears today. Yes, and above each of those recesses, there is a smaller floor plate, and it terraces back further up, further up, until you have a relatively small floor plate which pairs away from the views of the residential building that's presently standing there. Next slide. So, there are really two ground floors, so to speak, because of the grade changes. There's the lower ground floor, and there is an upper ground floor based on the extensive grade changes throughout the site. And there is a proposed Community Board meeting space, and we met quite often with them, and they had a very valuable input on the uses of the ground floor. And you see the yellow portion that's further up on 23rd Street, that is envisioned to be a local produce and food market where local vendors would be invited to sell their product, and it would be envisioned as an open space where people can visit and walk around, and it would also give access to the main roof for the community, for access to an open-to-the-sky landscaped area. And that little green area that you see goes directly to a dedicated elevator that takes you up to the fifth floor. The balance of the floor is with office-related uses, additional retail, and the mechanical component that serves the building. Next slide. So, this is an image that we worked through with the Community Board for an open versatile space that the Community Board could fashion over time on an as-needs basis, so to speak, for their meetings or for other get-togethers that they might plan. And we've made a commitment to maintain the space, to be sure that it's in great condition over the life of the facility. Next? I'm sorry, next? So, this is a view of the entrance of the Community Board facility that you see fronting 23rd Street, and we're showing on the upper left one of the many iterations that might be used for their meetings. You can see that there's going to be storage space for those chairs, just as you see here, and that lends a certain vitality and versatility of the space, which also has access to the local produce component that we mentioned earlier. Next? So, the upper ground floor provides the main entrance in the middle of the block fronting Queens Plaza South for the office building component, and is also an additional access point for the dedicated elevator for more people to be able to gain access to our proposed open landscape space open to the sky. The umber-yellow portions that you see are envisioned to be additional retail spaces. We're envisioning to curate these spaces so that we would have food produce locally sourced and other additional retail spaces as well. As just to the right of that green lobby area, there's going to be an exhibit of the history of Eagle Electric, and that would keep the sense of history alive and educate people to its reuse. The balance of the floor plate is for dedicated loading, which presently exists on the site for the office building, and a component for bicycle storage, which includes electric recharge stations. Next? So, this is a view of the roof of the existing Eagle Electric building, which is envisioned to have covered, open, and open-to-the-sky landscaping that you see in that portion of the floor plan, which is in sort of a slate blue. The green portion to the right is a continuation of that travel access for those members of the community who want to be outside, open to the sky, where they could sit and enjoy the balance of the site. And the beige area is envisioned to be outdoor, both covered and uncovered, seating area for the envisioned smaller restaurant, which you see in yellow. The balance of the floor plate is dedicated for office use. That would be in the pale plum. Next? So, here you see the progression of the floor plates. On the right is the largest floor plate, which is the Eagle Electric floor plate, below as well as the floor plate for the office building upstairs with the 60-foot separation above. Next? Okay, here's another fourth-floor iteration of the existing Eagle Electric building. On the right is another image of the fifth floor. That's a repeat of what we discussed before. Next? And now, you see that pale-blue area represents that 60-foot distance between the back of the residential building and our first new floor of office, which fills out the street wall up to a height of 150 feet. As soon as we reach that height of 150 feet, you see that cascading setback of the additional office floors as you go higher up in the building. Next? And here you see additional setbacks as well until you reach that final setback where we start splaying from the back to allow for views for the residence from 1QPS it's referred to, which is the completed residential building to the south. Next level? Then on the right, you'll see the final floor, which is the 26th floor, which provides another opportunity for office users for outdoor space. So, what we've done here is to work with the best minds available from a marketing point of view to educate us to the latest needs post-COVID for office users, which would be wellness both inside as well as access to open landscape space throughout the building. We've also found from a marketing point of view that the smaller floor plates are going to be very much in demand as opposed to the larger floor plates, and you can see that there's a broad range of sizes for potential office users throughout the building. I think that's it, next? So, this gives an overview?
I think we can skip to the landscape.
Right.
Just being very mindful of time here.
As an architect, I get tedious. So, I'm going to introduce Rick Perici, who could give some greening to these otherwise stale-looking drawings of mine. Thank you, here.
Good afternoon, I guess it's afternoon, right? After 12:00. I'm Rick Perici, Managing Principal, MPFP, Landscape Architects. And as Jim and Penny both mentioned, you know, this building has been designed with open space in mind, and there's a tremendous amount of open space for the building users. And there's also an open space on that fifth floor above the electric building's roof that's accessible from the lower level and the street level via elevator. And if you go to the next one, please? So, everything that's in light green is the open space that's developed as a series of rooms for the building users. To the right, to the right of the bottom of the sheet, there's a 2,600-square-foot open space that's available to the public, and that is adjacent to a restaurant, open to the sky, and it actually goes underneath the tower, and there's a bar area and seating for that restaurant that wraps around the corner of the building as well. The open space, the public open space, is envisioned as a very flexible space that you could program small community events in. There's a lot of movable tables and chairs, there's some fixed seating, there's planting, there's an elevated deck that is ADA accessible, that you can come up to and view over the parapet. And, you know, we see it as, you know, pretty much an extended And, you know, we, we see it as, you know, pretty much an extension of the thinking in the building, that this open space just wraps the building. They will be able to see into the private open space. It feels like you're up in a, on a, a very large roof park. And if you go to the next, you'll see the sections. So this is a cross-section through the elevated platform. The slope, the slope access is up behind that. And you can see you can view over the parapet. Next section. And this is a section through the cafe. The cafe's on the right. The elevated platform with the slope up is to the left of that. So there'll be mature trees up there, you know, there'll be built-in seating, movable seating, and we think it's a, you know, it's a nice amenity for the community to, you know, for programmable events, small programming, uh, events up there. That's it.
So it, I just want to be mindful of time. I just want to summarize and that we received unanimous approval from Community Board Two with a number of conditions that Dynamic Star had agreed to. And they are, they were attached to the community board's recommendation. And we also received a, a recommendation of approval from the Queensborough President's Office. And I, I just want to clarify a couple of things because there have been some changes to the initial presentation that have come up rather recently that we have been not able to brief our architect on. The community space, we have had discussions with the preliminary discussions with the Y and with their intergovernmental folks about the idea of the, the Long Island City Y being able to use that space for programming. We had a very productive, very short discussion at the end of the day yesterday. And the headquarters, intergovernmental folks are going to be reaching out to the Long Island City Y, you know, today, to have that discussion. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is that we have also had outreach with Spectrum, which was one of the community board's conditions of their approval. We reached out to Spectrum about providing Wi-Fi in the building when it's constructed and then also plugging into their public Wi-Fi network. So those discussions are, are also underway. So I, I think now it's probably most beneficial to, to allow all of you to ask questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I have a few questions for the applicants and I'm going to pass it over to Councilmember Juan.
Okay.
Before we begin, I just want to announce that we've been joined by Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember Anief. And I'm just going to open up the vote for Councilmember Lewis.
Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote on today's items? I'll use one eighty-one, one eighty-two, and one eighty-three. How do you vote?
Sorry, I have a quick question. Are the councilmembers in support?
Uh, councilmember, yes, the, the local councilmember is in support.
I vote aye.
Thank you. So by a vote of, the final vote is eight and the affirmative, no negatives, no abstentions. The items are approved and will be referred to the full land use committee for, for review and approval. I just want to correct, Chair, if you'll allow me, just, because Penny brought it up. So indeed, you know, we just went through the presentation. And so the zoning text amendment, I just want to correct on the record, which was an oversight in the remarks for the chat, for the chair. Zoning text amendments is to establish Area D in the Queens Plaza sub-district to make an Area D subject to the sub-district special bulk regulations and add new floor area and base height regulations to Area D. So thanks, Penny, for bringing it to our attention. I just want to also point out that this item is on our website and noticed correctly and introduced correctly. But thanks, Penny, for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. So my first question is, you spoke about a lot of commercial space. Can you indicate how many commercial spaces are on the ground level?
Well, we're presently envisioning four, but based on the reception of the spaces over time, there may be more.
You could turn on the mic, right?
Uh, yeah, there may be more smaller spaces. We've envisioned that each of the corners would be a prime retail opportunity. But I would defer to our developer, Brad Zaxton, to see how that might evolve. But we're third, uh, we, we've envisioned curating the spaces to be more locally sourced as opposed to some big-box national news.
Okay. And Jim, I may have misunderstood, but did you indicate that this will be the community board's new location or the community board will have access to space in this location?
That they would have access to spaces, but I seem to have been updated at the last moment in terms of its envisioned use.
I just wasn't aware until now.
Yeah, no, I, like I said, this was very late-breaking. We had a, a meeting at the end of the day yesterday about the, the possibility of the Long Island City Y operating the community space in the lower ground floor. And Tom Gresh is also here from the Queens Chamber to talk about a potential collaboration for the northwest corner of the lower ground floor for incubator space as well.
Okay. What would be most likely the alternative if this rezoning were disapproved?
The building could really not be repurposed. Right now, based on the existing zoning, approximately twenty thousand square feet of the existing, approximately twenty thousand square feet of floor area could be constructed on the site. Either by a reuse of the existing building or a demolition of the existing building and then just the construction of a new building. I also want to note that in, if the, in order to save the ground floor of the building to use it for office space, the upper floors would have to be demolished because of the existing FAR restriction.
Thank you, Penny.
Sure.
Why do you see Queens Plaza South as a good location for new office space, especially with work-from-home and hybrid working arrangements becoming more common for office work? Are there certain industries or type of tenants that you think will find this proposal space attractive?
Yes, we think there's a large market for new buildings that are healthy, fun, well-located like this building, and also priced nationally versus what's happening in Manhattan. If you look at what's leasing in Manhattan or the Wells-certified buildings, the rents are almost three times. So there's very little companies on a national basis. We are looking at tech, medical, and a lot of other industry CBREs. We've initially had a, a initial press release and we've had quite a few calls from different companies that were not, that we didn't think were coming to Long Island City. National companies, technology, film industry, medical industry, and some others are coming on the leasing.
Well, we're also saying that there's a sea change in terms of attitudes and a sense of safety and a need for people contact back in the office. The work at home that, that we've received as architects has not been as successful and most of our people are now back in the office. We're experiencing that there likely will be a change to maybe half or two-thirds of one's time being at the office with flexibility for being able to work at home. That's what we're experiencing now as we distance ourselves from the pandemic.
Thank you. My last question, could you describe the environmental features of the proposed project?
Environmental and, could you clarify what you mean by environmental, just so I?
Pretty much the, the features that you're going to be doing for climate change for the building. So can you describe the features that you're going to be having at the location for environmental benefits for the community?
Sure. I can speak to the Wells certification program and I think Jim can speak more to the compliance with the energy code. But, I mean, the, the hallmark feature of this building will be as much natural air bring, you know, using as much natural air as possible to bring into the building for, for employee wellness. That does have impacts on energy usage because that air has to be conditioned. But that is the goal, is to have as much clean air brought into the building as possible. The Dynamic Star also wants to work to have as many of the upper floors as possible with the ability to open windows, again, for, to bring in maximize, to, to maximize the amount of clean, positive air in the building. And I'll turn it over to Jim for energy compliance.
Uh, in, in terms of the efficiency of the building, not only are we going to be having a superior glazing for insulation and exterior wall, but additionally, we had always envisioned the exposed roofs to be heat sink roofs with landscaping, passive landscaping, which is different from what you would see typically for buildings that have been built maybe a year or so or earlier. So we fully expect to be compliant and then go above that in terms of passive heat sinks for our major, major roof areas on top of the high level of insulation that we have for the exterior wall, which is being studied right now by our mechanical engineers.
Thank you. I'm going to yield my time to Councilmember Juan. Councilmember Juan?
Thank you so much, Chair Riley. Hello, everybody. It's good to see you again. It's great to hear that you've been able to connect with the Long Island City YMCA. Can you tell me about the recreational space and what the hours will be for the recreational space for public use, including the Y?
Yes. We had, when we spoke to the Y, and, and I just want to clarify, we spoke with the intergovernmental relations folks for the headquarters of the Y, and then they're going to be reaching out to the Long Island City Y. But we had talked to them about incorporating the gym space. It's a half-basketball court and then fitness space to be combined with the community room for, you know, between two-thirty and six, those kinds of hours. That was the initial discussion. It may modify, but that was the initial discussion. Yeah.
So I would like to see the commitment for that timeframe, two-thirty to six P.M., especially around dismissal time because of the heightened shootings and violence that the risk have, the at-risk youth have been showing in the community for public safety reasons. And I will continue to follow up with you before the vote to see how that conversation's going and I'll reach out to the Long Island City YMCA as well. Have you been able to get in contact with LaGuardia Community College about the incubator space?
We have not been in contact with LaGuardia Community College. Tom Gresh from the Queens Chamber is a partner with them in their incubator space and he was planning to speak to that in his testimony.
Okay. And for the community facility, for the community board, how will that be accessed?
Well, that, so that was the, the kind of mix-up. So the, the, it's the twenty-four-hundred-ten square feet that was pro, was designated as community space, right? Whether it would be used by the community board itself, whether it would be used by the Y, it was to be programmed in collaboration with the community and yourself and, you know, other elected officials and, and civic groups. So right now, we are engaging with the Y for the operation of that space.
Okay. That's great. So can you commit to supporting one full-time staff member at minimum for the community program with the space, preferably with the Y if they're not available with somebody else?
Yes.
Okay.
Also committed to work with them to figure out how we can staff it because it will not be charged until they move in because how they work.
Yeah, you should. Okay. Because it will probably cost anywhere from like fifty-two to seventy-five K per year for that one employee. Okay, thank you. And we'll hear about the incubator space from Tom Gresh. And for the fifth-floor rooftop open space that is open to the public, how, can you describe what hours of operations will be and how they will be able to access the rooftop? Will it just be open where anyone can come in and out without a key or a code?
Yeah, it will definitely be publicly accessible to anybody coming in. It's accessible, it'll be accessible from two points of entry. The, the building lobby itself along Queens Plaza South and then also from the, the incubator space in the lower ground floor. That leads to an elevator that goes directly up to the roof.
Okay.
And when you come in from the lobby, that would also take you to the same elevator that would take you up to the roof. And the initial hours that we've been thinking about is eight A.M. to six P.M. Monday through Friday as a way to start. And then, you know, depending on usage, to modify the hours accordingly.
Are you open to having it open on weekends?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
And the other thing that, that we would want to work with you on and, and, you know, the community on as the building, you know, gets closer to, to opening, is just the most appropriate locations for signs, you know, just to make sure that people are aware that there is the public open space on the roof.
Great. And will you be having programming or will you allow for programming on the public rooftop space? For example, if the Y wants to have youth programming on the rooftop, will that be allowed?
I think that would be a case-by-case basis. I, I don't, it doesn't make sense to rule it out.
The, the only concern might be noise generation for the residents of the apartment building.
In the neighborhood, you mean?
The one facade for One QPS that faces over the roof.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so we have to be mindful of those residents.
Okay.
Depending on the event or what it is, I've been approached, who's thinking of the restaurant for the same thing. So I think we could coordinate depending on what it is.
Okay.
Because the office building will be closed, so we can work through it. Long as it's not, I would say something that, sorry.
Okay.
That's too noisy.
And I'm glad to hear you've connected with Spectrum. So are you able to commit to providing free Wi-Fi in the community spaces and the rooftop?
Yes.
Thank you. And will there be preferential rents in the building for nonprofits?
We, we, we'll look at it an individual basis. We haven't had a broad, uh, saying, but yes, we, Borough President has requested it, I think you did, and we're open to do it on case-to-case basis.
And can you describe what a percentage rent is? What leases will be percentage rent leases?
All the retail will be percentage leases to local operators, which means that until the, uh, they make money, they don't pay any rent. And then when they finally do make money, they pay a percentage of the, the profits as their long-term rent. It's a way of us investing into the right operators to get great operators and be in their partners. It's been very successful in other parts of the city and other places to get the best local retail.
Okay. Do you know what percentage of that will be?
Typically, it's eight, nine percent of the gross is, is what's, uh, when it gets to a profit is what the number is, but each one's negotiated separately. But we'll come up with something similar to what others are doing.
Okay, got it. And then lastly, ha, are you expecting to have labor agreements for the construction and the operation of the proposed projects and with whom? For union labor?
Yes. We, we are working with Gary LaBarber and we're working with the carpenters union also.
Okay. And then Thirty-two B J is also going to be on?
Thirty-two B J has been signed up and we're going to be training locally all of the employees together from the local people.
Okay. And then for the, um, street vendor project, have you been able to connect with them?
No, we haven't, but I will look forward to talking to them because they could be part of the food concept as we have another space above that could work for something similar to that, which we might expand the food idea to the second floor.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Juan, are there any more councilmembers with questions for this applicant panel?
I have a question.
Councilmember Lewis?
Thanks. Good to see you all today. Thank you, Chair. I just have a quick question because they were all answered already about community space. Well, with the inclusion now of the YMCA, is it going to be the same square footage and occupancy number for the community space that you already have?
Well, the community space will be the same, but we're adding the use of the health club in certain hours so it's shared with the office building. So it'll be open on the weekends, whatever hours they decide, because we're not open the office building. And I think we talked about two-thirty to six, so every day it's used. So it's expanded space.
No, I'm aware of the time, but the square footage of the actual community space where the community board could utilize this space for meetings, is that going to remain the same square footage and occupancy?
Yes.
Okay. And the last question is, yes?
I, I just want to clarify, it's not a health club, it's an accessory, um, fitness area.
Fitness area.
But to answer your question, the community board did ask me on certain meetings that we would be able to use the conference on the top floor for their larger meetings. And I agreed to do that. I, I don't know if it's in writing, but we did agree to that.
Right. We should probably get that in writing. And in regards to the thirty percent threshold for MWBE firms, are you willing to go a little bit higher than the thirty percent that the Borough President is recommending? And have you already identified MWBE firms that could support the project?
We haven't, but we will. And we will bring on a construction manager and a team to be doing that with the union, but we haven't done it yet.
Okay.
And we always try to beat what the minimums are when we're here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. There being no further questions, this applicant panel is excused. Counselor Danny, members of the public who was to testify on twenty-three-das-ten Queens Plaza South rezoning proposal remotely or in person?
So Chair, we have at least a couple of people here in person, so we could have, after the applicant team moves on, we can have Tom Gresh and Jason Paul come we can have Tom Gresh and Jason Paul come up to the table. And if there's anyone else here in person testifying for this item, if you can see one of the sergeants, so you can fill out a witness slip. And we also have, online, we have John Schaefer, James Buah, and Neil Doria. But, so I'll just make a couple of quick announcements about the testimony for members of the public here to testify. Just know you'll be calling panels just like I did. So, and for those of you online, please stand by when you hear your name being called and prepared to speak when the chair says that you may begin. And then please, once you have finished your testimony, if you're remotely, please, you'll be removed as a group, but stay in the meeting in case the council members have questions for you until you are removed. So Chair, we have the two witnesses here. So up to you who you want to call on first.
Thank you, Council. Members of the public, we will be given two minutes to speak. Please do not begin until Sergeant Alves has started the clock. We will first begin with Tom Gresh. Tom, you may begin.
Thank you very much.
Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
No worries. It's my whole life. No worries. My name is Tom, does the clock start?
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Tom Gresh. I'm the president and C E O of the Queens Chamber of Commerce. It's great to see all of you in person, especially our local elected official Councilmember One. I'm in full support of the rezoning of twenty-three ten Queens Plaza South. Dynamic Star's new development will provide important new office space for Long Island City while also providing local community benefits such as new ground floor retail with lighting, new rooftop, public open space, new community space and public restrooms. Dynamic Star is working with the local community to determine the right mix of small and local retail. And we have already begun exploring potential incubator space that will empower Queens entrepreneurs to start their own businesses on Queens Plaza South. This is something the Queens Chamber of Commerce is assisting Dynamic Star with, and it's consistent with our current partnership with LaGuardia Community College, along with Queens College and some other sites in conjunction with President Ken Adams of LaGuardia Community College. We can see the strong commitment to the city through their labor agreement with thirty-two B J. for post-construction building operations. Not only that, but the construction will be done with union labor, further proving Dynamic Star's commitment to the providing well-paying jobs to the community. This is the kind of development and partnership we need in Queens, the kind of team and project that's responsive to the needs of the Long Island City community. For these reasons, to again restate, the Queens Chamber of Commerce is in full support of the twenty-ten Queens Plaza South rezoning. I have two other comments to make regarding the street vendors that were brought up before by the other council member and also the M W B E component upon questioning by your board.
You could continue.
Thank you. So we have been in contact unrelated to this Queens Plaza South project with Mohammed Attia from the Street Vendor Project. Try to find a way to get the street vendors to work a little bit better with the brick and mortar businesses. That's an ongoing process. Just as an F Y I., we're building some bridges there. And on the M W B E side, first with LaGuardia Airport and now with J F K Airport, we have been involved from day one with a lot of different M W B E components. In fact, we just got two of our members to start offering food at Cityfield that were part of the M W B E component. So we're very, very proud of that, and we'll lend our expertise to not only this board, but also to our friends at Dynamic Star to help in that effort.
Councilmember One, you have a question for?
For the development team and for Queens Chamber, can you commit to having Street Vendor Project as part of the incubator?
Not quite ready to commit yet. We just started dialogue with the leadership there, but I don't see it being a problem as this thing further develops and transpires. I would love to be able to get some of those street vendors to eventually get to a brick and mortar situation. And part of what we're going to do for the incubators would include food type of products. So I can't necessarily commit myself to that particular group, but we are going to be seeking other food vendors in general. And if they can be part of that, I would welcome it.
The street vendors are street vendors. Their goal is not to become a brick and mortar store necessarily. Some of them want to be street vendors.
I understand. So you're saying have street vendors into the incubator?
Yes, as part of the incubation process for having ghost kitchens, et cetera.
For ghost kitchens in the restaurant piece, yes, absolutely.
Okay, or catering because they do do both.
On the food side, we've been engaging in that entire space. So my answer is yes, now upon clarification.
Okay, because Street Vendor Project is also a huge part of Western Queensland Trust, who is watching this project very closely, have been asking for a food commissary as well as access to commercial kitchens for their catering to large events.
I can't speak for the group at Dynamic Star, but I can speak for myself that we're committing to that.
Okay, and then?
Brad, come up to the?
Okay, I'll talk to you afterwards. And then for LaGuardia Community College, they also have an incubator, and they've been seeking a lot of support, especially financially. Have you been in touch with them about the incubation, the incubator you're going to open in this new building?
Yes, so across the board, we are supporting, and you might appreciate this from your background in tech. We formed a Queens Tech Council. We currently have an incubator in Rockaway at Beach one oh five. We have a tech incubator at the Greater Nexus in downtown Jamaica in the space from the Greater Jamaica Development Corp. We're trying to get one in Flushing, and we're going to have two more, one in Queens College. The agreements are being prepared right now. So we're going to be putting companies in the incubator space at Queens College as well as at LaGuardia Community College. We have access to the companies. They have access to students. We want to have a symbiotic relationship and get local startups in that facility.
Can you clarify what the incubator space will be then with this new development?
It's uncertain right now. Food and restaurant-type ghost kitchens are ones that we really want to pursue in this facility in a big, big way because of the proximity to the Long Island City area in general, and also some tech.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Jason Paul?
Thank you.
Yes, hello. First, I'd like to thank the council for your time. I'm here today. My name is Jason Paul, and I'm representing Local Union Number Three. That's the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers in the Borough of Queens. We would like to express our support in the project. We would ask that the construction be done using union labor, as mentioned, especially all aspects of the electrical of the project, which may include power, lighting, fire alarm, security, low voltage communication, signage, charging stations, and maintenance of those mentioned systems. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Are there any more questions for this applicant panel? If not, you are excused. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, can we please call the panel online?
Yes, so we have John Schaefer, James Buah, and Neil Doria. So if we could have John Schaefer go first when he's ready.
Starting time.
Is John?
I'm conducting it, everyone.
Go ahead, John.
Like the former Eagle workers, I'm a proud member of Local Three International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, as Jason Paul is. And I'm also a life-known New Yorker. You could probably tell that by my accent. So this project is not only visibly appealing, but it'll certainly address a lot of the needs of the community as you have very well explained. But it'll also create many much-needed skilled construction jobs our city and our citizens need right now. Union trades use our local citizens who are already highly trained in their fields and who can do the job as safely and efficiently as possible. We've all seen disastrous and often fatal construction site failures over the past decade caused by cutting corners in engineered design, poor material quality, and cheap, unskilled labor. Almost invariably, these dangerous construction sites and the buildings they become are developed by non-union companies, and the cheating strategies are intentionally employed by predatory and anti-union contractors, maximizing their personal profits at the expense of the lives and safety of our citizens. We need to build structures that last for generations, not just to the end of the warranty. I believe we should move ahead with this project, and that should be done using the highly skilled and motivated members of the local construction unions readily available, who have a long history of operating in safe, professional manner, completing projects on time and under budget. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, John. If we could, I'm your James Buah next.
Starting time.
Hey, thank you for letting me speak today here. My name is James Buah. I'm a business rep for Local Three I B W, Electricians Union in the Five Burrows. I happen to be the rep for the Borough of Queens. I'm in complete support of the rezoning for this project. Penny and Jim, that was a great presentation you gave. Answered a lot of questions, I think, for most everybody involved with this job. I'm glad that Diamond Star, Dynamic Star is committed to the community with this project. They're committed to use union labor on this project, and I'm a hundred percent for this project. And once again, I represent the Borough of Queens for Local Three, which we have over five thousand families living in Queens and over twenty-eight thousand members of Local Three, and we are in support of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, James. The next person to testify is Neil Duara. Neil, if you could hear me, you may begin.
Okay, I too, I'd like to thank you for a great presentation. I too am a member of Local Union Number Three I B W, currently working and residing in Queens. And I have to tell you, this looks like it'll serve the communities substantially and meet a lot of the needs. And I'm very happy to hear that you're going to be using union labor on this. Can't stress enough the importance of that, only for safety factors and a living wage, et cetera. So to reiterate what my brothers from Local Three have said, we are in support of this project one hundred percent, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Neil. Do any council members have any questions for the applicant panel? Seeing none, you are excused. Thank you so much. I'm going to do a last call. Is there anybody in the room who wants to testify on this item? There being all the members of the public who was to testify on L U's one eighty-six, one eighty-seven, and one eighty-eight relating to the twenty-three ten Queens Plaza South rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the items are laid over. I will now open the public hearing on preconsiders L U's one eighty-nine, one ninety, and one ninety-one relating to the paperific rezoning proposal in Councilmember Hanif's district in Brooklyn. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone existing M one dash two to M two dash one and R six zoning districts to a C four dash four A and R six B zoning district. A related zoning text amendment to map an M I H program area and a zoning special permit pursuant to zoning resolution section seventy-four dash six eight one A two to allow development over portions of a railroad or transit right-of-way. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online. And you may not, you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council dot N Y C dot gov slash land use. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. Council, please call the first panel for this item.
The panelist for this item is Eli Gerds, and I think it's only you, right, today?
Council, please administer the affirmation.
Can you please raise your right hand to affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee, and then you answer to all council member questions.
Thank you for the view in public. If you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landytestimony at council dot N Y C dot gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask that you please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Ellie Gwerz. I'm from Davidoff, Hutchery, and Citron, and I'm representing the applicants here, Stanford LLC and Comprit Optics, Inc. In this rezoning application for the paperific rezoning, it's at fourteen fifty-nine, fourteen sixty-three, thirty-eighth Street in the Borough Park section of Brooklyn, Community District twelve, and we're in Councilmember Shaheena Hanif's district. And I just want to thank the councilwoman for being here today. Next slide, please. So this rezoning application, as mentioned, at the paperific supermarket location is, this is an active supermarket at thirty-eighth Street between Fourteenth and Fifteenth Avenues in Borough Park, Brooklyn. The site frontage has frontage on thirty-eighth Street as well as Thirty-seventh Street to the north. This action, this application is seeking three separate land use applications. The first one is a zoning map amendment to rezone twenty-five blocks. Block fifty-three, forty-eight, lots fifteen, seventeen, forty-nine, and fifty-four are the applicant-owned development site. We're also rezoning lots that front Fifteenth Avenue, which are not applicant-owned, which comprise lots one eighteen, one nineteen, forty-one, forty-two, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight. We're proposing to rezone those lots from M one-two, M two-one, and R six to C four-four A. And then further west along Thirty-eighth Street, lots fifty-five through sixty-six from M two-one to R six B. The second land use action we're proposing is a zoning text amendment to map the entire project area as an M I H area pursuant to options one and option two. And lastly, we're also seeking a special permit pursuant to zoning resolution section seventy-four dash six eighty-one to permit development within a former transit right-of-way. Our site, which as I noted, fronts Thirty-seventh Street. Thirty-seventh Street is a former right-of-way for the Culver-L shuttle, which was a rapid transit shuttle that was operating from nineteen fifty-four through nineteen seventy-five. It ran from Ninth Avenue to the west to Didmis Avenue to the east over Thirty-seventh Street. This was also the location for the South Brooklyn Railroad, which also terminated its freight operations in the nineteen eighties, and it's since been paved over. So because part of our development site is part of this former transit right-of-way, we also need the special permit here in order to include these lots in our development site. All of these land use actions are meant to facilitate construction of a five-story fully commercial building, which includes an enhanced, slightly enlarged, paperific supermarket on the ground floor and office uses above. The proposed development would contain approximately a hundred and three thousand five hundred square feet, maximizing the four-point-oh F A R permitted in the proposed C four-four A district. Next slide, please. I'm just a brief recap of the Euler process so far. So Brooklyn Community Board twelve, back in December of twenty-twenty-two, voted to fully support this application with no votes to disapprove. The Borough President in February voted to approve the application with conditions, and the City Planning Commission voted in March unanimously to approve this application. Next slide, please. So here's, I understand there's a lot of lots in this proposed project area. So as you see here, the lots in the gray that front Fifteenth Avenue, those are all currently zoned R six. We are not proposing any development over those lots. They are actually a product of a rezoning back in two thousand and seven, the King's Material rezoning, which was meant to facilitate a six-story residential building. That building was never built. It's been almost sixteen years now. So that, we are proposing to rezone from R six to C four-four A as you move a hundred feet west. That's the beginning of our development site. The paperific supermarket currently exists there on Lot forty-nine. And as you see, our development site is currently in an M one-two, M two-one district, which comprises four tax lots, forty-nine, fifty-four along Thirty-eighth Street, and fifteen and seventeen along Thirty-seventh Street. And then further west are all, those are all eighteen hundred square foot lots that contain one and two family homes. They're currently legal non-conforming uses in an M two-one district. Those homes were built in nineteen oh one before the zoning resolution came out in nineteen sixty-one. And we're looking to clean up the zoning map by rezoning those homes to R six B, which would make them conforming uses. Next slide, please. Here's, you can see the current zoning map on the left. As you see, it's currently mapped a hundred feet deep west, a hundred feet deep from Fifteenth Avenue is R six, a hundred feet west of that is M one-two, and then M two-one for the remaining northern side there of Thirty-eighth Street. And we are proposing, as you see, to rezone two hundred and twenty feet deep from Fifteenth Avenue along Thirty-seventh Street and two hundred and seventy- Along thirty-seventh Street and two hundred and seventy feet deep along thirty-eighth Street to C four-four A. And then beyond that, along thirty-eighth Street, twenty-one thousand six hundred square feet to R six B. Next slide, please. Here's a aerial of our site. Uh, the paper, the development site is highlighted here in red. In yellow is the proposed area that we're proposing to rezone to C four-four A. And then the, the blue is the proposed row homes, which we are proposing to rezone to R six B. Next slide, please. This just gives you some context of what our building would look like in, in context with the surrounding area. So to the immediate north is a ninety-foot, um, large office complex known as Brooklyn Square. This is a fully leased-out office building in Borough Park. It's, it's used by local residents, local entrepreneurs who are looking, who need office space to, to work locally in the area. That's a ninety-foot building. To our immediate east, on the other side of fifteenth Avenue, you have a six-story seventy-foot building. And what we're proposing is going to be five stories, sixty-three feet. Also note that the, the F train line along McDonald Avenue is point-three miles to the east. Um, with the closest station at Ditmish Avenue, and then point-four miles to the northeast. You also have F and G service at Church Avenue. Next slide, please. Here's our, a land use map, which giving you a sense of the surrounding uses in the area. This is a highly mixed-use area. As you see from, from the different colors, the, the, the red notes, um, office and, and other types of retail uses. The items in purple, note more industrial type uses. The yellow is the residential. You see how Dome Playground is one block to the east. Um, there along thirty-eighth Street, and again, you see, one and a half blocks to the east is the F train line. McDonald Avenue providing, um, public transit access to this area. Next slide, please. Here, just run through some, some photos of the site. So this is what the current supermarket looks like today. As you see, it does not have a typical supermarket look. Um, the supermarket has been at this site since nineteen eighty-two. Um, it is extremely beloved in the community. It's called Paperific. It's, um, primarily caters to the area's large Orthodox Jewish population, as all the food in the supermarket is kosher. Um, and that building to the immediate west is Lot fifty-four. They use that now as just storage. And, and some of their office work, and that would also be part of the development site. Next slide, please. Here's another view of the, um, the warehouse-looking supermarket, the Paperific supermarket. That's currently thirty-six feet tall. Next slide, please. This is looking at the site from the back. Um, this is thirty-seventh Street. There are currently two lots that are part of our development site. Um, lots fifteen and seventeen. This is used for parking for the, for the, um, uh, some, for the customers and some of the employees. Um, as is very apparent to everyone, there is ponding in front of the site, and this is something that we've been working extensively with. Um, with the council member's office to, um, do as much as we can to help improve the conditions along thirty-seventh Street. Um, if anyone has been to thirty-seventh Street, there's a lot to be desired on this street. There is, um, there are no sidewalks along southern, along the southern side of thirty-seventh Street. Um, and as, when we get to the rendering, I'm gonna explain further of what, um, are the applicant commits to in terms of the resiliency measures here. And then try to control the, the ponding, um, post-development. Next slide, please. This is looking at also from thirty-seventh Street. This is another parking lot that, um, that Paperific uses for, for some of their employees. That's Lot seventeen, part of our development site. Next slide, please. This is looking at the project area, um, facing southeast from thirty-seventh Street. Um, as you see, um, this, it's a pretty, you know, rundown-looking area right now, along thirty-seventh Street. And we're hoping that our application can really help revitalize this segment of thirty-seventh Street right here. Next slide, please. This is looking northwest down thirty-seventh Street. As you see, that's the Brooklyn Square off, um, four hundred and forty thousand. Square foot office co- complex to our immediate north along thirty-seventh Street. And our application, um, as I mentioned before, will be including office space on the upper floors. We're hoping this could be a further complement to the Brooklyn Square with office space, which is fully leased out. We're seeing a really high demand for office in this area from local, local entrepreneurs. People who running their own businesses, who are looking to not commit, commute to Manhattan for work, but to, um, work locally and find office space. And we're hoping to piggyback off the success that we're, that we've been seeing here from Brooklyn Square. Next slide, please. This is the view of the row homes that we are planning to rezone from M two-one to R six B. As you see, these are typical one and two-story row homes, all of which are legal non-conforming uses. Um, they, it, the, when the city mapped M two-one here, these buildings were already existing. So we would just be, you know, matching the zoning map to the actual built context here along this portion of thirty-eighth Street. By rezoning it to R six B. Next slide, please. This is our renderings of, this is the thirty-eighth Street elevation. So the building will be comprised mostly of brick materials with large vertical windows and with modern accents. You may note that the building does, may not look typical at the ground floor of a supermarket. We did that intentionally to, um, help the building, the supermarket blend more harmoniously with the surrounding context. You see, there's two entrance, dedicated entrances to the Paperific supermarket in the center and to the, uh, on the right. And then to the left is the dedicated entrance for the office space along thirty-eighth Street. Next slide, please. This is our proposed rendering for thirty-seventh Street. As you see, it already looks much better than the existing conditions. There's an one existing tree along thirty-seventh Street. We'd be able to plant one more street tree here. Um, both street trees will have enhanced tree pits, which we're hoping could do a lot to help soak up some of the stormwater runoff here. There's also an existing tree, as you see, to the immediate east, and that was shown in some of the photographs. So that officially is not in front of our lot frontage. We only have a hundred feet of lot frontage here along thirty-seventh Street. But with those three street trees, we're hoping could help soak up a lot of the, of the stormwater. One of the other primary things we're planning on doing is actually building out the sidewalk in accordance with, with D O T specifications. And D O T requirements. We're hoping with a sidewalk and two proper curb cuts. One which will access the cellar, which will contain sixty-three parking spaces for office and supermarket customers. There's also gonna be to the east, that's our loading berth entrance. So we're, s- uh, we have intentionally put all, our more, our loading. And more industrial type uses along thirty-seventh Street, which is the more industrial street, keeping trucks and loading off the street and away from thirty-eighth Street. Which is more residential in nature. In addition to the enhanced tree pits and the, and the other, and the street trees. And the curb cuts and the, and the proposed sidewalk. If, if D O P, if D, excuse me, if D E P determines that the site conditions are appropriate. We are also open to, um, having rain gardens here in between the street trees to, as a further measure to help. Um, with the ponding issues along thirty-seventh Street. Additionally, the roof will be employing a, um, a roof detention system, which will help control, control flow roof. Um, drainage and, and, and help control water flowing from the roof. As you saw in the pictures, the current roof is sloped and water just seeps off very easily from the current roof. This is, will be a more flat roof with a roof detention system, which, again, we're also hoping should and anticipate will significantly. Help with the drainage and, and ponding issues that we currently see along thirty-seventh Street. Next slide, please. This, just some more information about our proposed development. So as I mentioned, it's going to, we're proposing it to be five stories, sixty-three feet tall. Which is not out of context for the surrounding area. Um, there will be a total of a hundred and three thousand five hundred and square feet of all commercial floor area. The ground floor would increase the current supermarket from fifteen thousand to approximately nineteen thousand nine hundred eighty-five. Square feet. Current, in the current zoning in the M one-two, the supermarket would not be allowed to increase its size. That is, um, they're, they're limited to ten thousand square feet, and we are already at fifteen thousand. So we need the rezoning in order to enable the increase to the supermarket. Um, as we came, uh, with the council member on a site visit, we all noted that the supermarket is very small right now. They need to in, enhance what they're offering. They're planning with this enlargement to provide more takeout counters. Bag goods, chicken, meat, you know, things that the local community really needs, and it's something that the community board is really excited about. To see a, a bit of an, a lar, an enlargement to the supermarket here. On the floors two through five, we're proposing fully office space. The second floor will be dedicated to Paperific's e-commerce business. They've been seeing a real explosion in their e-commerce business since the pandemic. And the second floor will be dedicated office space for, for that operation, whoever they need to run that arm of their business. And then floors three through five would be, um, following more of like, uh, a Regis. We were kind of coworking space model, again, piggybacking off of the success that we've seen right across the street at Brooklyn Square. And providing more local office space for, for, um, local entrepreneurs, people who live in, in the area. Who don't wanna have to commute to, to Manhattan anymore for, for office space. We'd be proposing sixty-three parking spaces in the cellar and thirty-four bicycle parking spaces on the ground floor. Next slide, please. Here's just a little bit more of, of, of in-depth view of the operations of, of the site. So as you see, the supermarket entrance would be along thirty-eighth Street. There's a dedicated office entrance for the office employees. On the western side of the development site along thirty-eighth Street. And in the back, as noted, keeping as many, the, the industrial and the trucks and cars away from thirty-eighth Street. We'll have two separate curb cuts, one leading to the cellar for the, for the cars, parking at the site. And then a dedicated loading berth for, for the trucks for the supermarket deliveries. That, um, next slide, please. I just provided an appendix, um, with further photographs and, and the proposed plans. But that concludes the initial presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. I just have a few questions. I'm gonna pass it over to Councilmember Hanif. Uh, three of the, three of this building's five stories are expected to be used for coworking space. Can you explain why you believe there's a demand for that use in this location?
Yes, um, so as I mentioned before, um, we saw that Brooklyn Square is fully leased out. And because of that, there is, there's no, there, there's no more office rental space like that in this area. Serving the Borough Park community. So because of that, um, we've determined that there is, there is strong demand for office. For this kind of space in this area in Brooklyn.
And how far is Brooklyn Square from this location?
It's immediately across the street.
Across the street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And lastly, how does the applicant plan to maximize energy efficiency, reduce greenhouse gas emission? And meet stormwater requirements on this site, especially on how thirty-seventh Street looked?
So yes, um, as mentioned, um, we plan on, with, um, the roof detention system on, on the roof. Um, we're also hoping to add a, um, a water detention take located in the cellar to also help collect water. To lower the capacity, the water capacity that's put into the sewer system. Just with our, our proposed builder's pavement plan, which we're going to have to, going to submitting at D O B. Providing sidewalks, um, the curb cuts, all of the measures that I mentioned before. We think will significantly improve the, the sustainability and drainage conditions here. We're also planning to be fully compliant with local law ninety-two, ninety-four, um, for, um, for solar, um, for solar panel roof, roofing. And, and other measures along that to be fully compliant with that local law.
Thank you, Eli. Councilmember Hanif?
Thank you so much for being here. This has been an exciting project, uh, given I grew up right around the corner and I'm very familiar with the. Large and growing Orthodox community and, um, what's so beautiful about that corridor is just how close the Muslim community is too. And, um, the need for, um, uh, our food options and the supermarkets that are iconic. To the lifeline of our community. So exciting to see the expansion of, uh, this supermarket. Um, I was curious, um, will there be a name change? I know Paperific began not as a traditional supermarket. It had a, a prior history in paper and.
So yeah, it's a good question. Um, I believe now, because they've been a staple in the community for forty years now. They have a strong name recognition, and I do believe that they do, they plan on keeping the Paperific name for the supermarket. There's also a, um, a sister supermarket in Flatbush on Coney Island Avenue. So I do think they wanna keep that, that branding.
Okay, got it. So, um, I know that the supermarket has seen an increase in online orders. Contributing to the need to expand not only their retail area, but their office space in order to manage fulfillment. Could you talk a little bit more about, um, how the online order fulfillment will work on the site? And how, uh, uh, you will ensure that deliveries do not pose health and safety hazards for the community?
So yes, so one of the reasons that I, I failed to mention before, why we also need the enlarged supermarket space. Part of the space in the actual retail supermarket will be dedicated for employees who will be boxing. And filling the shipments of those online orders. So there's gonna be a dedicated space in the supermarket, not, not meant for the retail customers. But set aside for employees of the supermarket to be filling those, those orders, boxing, um, those, those orders coming in online. They have, they employ delivery workers who, who deliver the, the groceries to the door. So it's, it's not expected, um, to be, you know, bringing in a, a lot of extra trucks or anything like that. Because of the delivery option, this is, um, either motorized scooter or, or e-bikes. And that's typically how the delivery workers will be, um, delivering the groceries to the online customers.
And could you talk a little bit more about, uh, the trucking or how many trucks are expected on a daily or weekly basis?
Yes, um, so I have that right here. So I, they were expecting two. Let me just get it right here. Yeah, so the truck gen, uh, traffic generation is expected to generate two truck trips during the A M peak hour. While other truck deliveries associated with the proposed use, uses are going to all be off-peak. So the goal is, um, to try to have as many, um, truck deliveries as off-peak as possible. Um, weekends as well, but typically speaking, there, it could be, you know, no more than, than two truck. Trips, um, during the A M peak hour, uh, per week.
Per week and not daily?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Um, and then, does the applicant commit to work with, uh, D E P to maximize green infrastructure on the site? Including installing enhanced tree pits and rain gardens where possible?
Yes, a hundred percent. That's something that the applicant is fully committed to. They wanna be working closely with D E P here, with D O T. This is something that's been plaguing, the, as I mentioned, the applicant has been here forty years, and they are not happy with the situation along thirty-seven. They wanna see that changed for the better, and this is something that they're, are fully committed to working closely with D E P. To do whatever they can to improve the condition there.
That's great. And, um, just building on that, uh, how will the applicant address the chronic drainage and flooding issues on thirty-seventh Street?
So again, with what we are planning, we think that'll be a significant improvement. Just by having a sidewalk with proper curb cuts helps with drainage more. Right now, everything just stays put. There's, cause the way the street looks, it's just, there's no place for the water to go. So even with just having sidewalks there, water could, um, couldn't, on, on, you know, permeable surfaces, water can spread out. Um, more and, and, and seep better into the environment, especially with the enhanced tree pits that we're proposing. Um, in addition to, um, the roof detention s- system. So we're hoping with, and, and if D E P determines that it's appropriate rain gardens as well. So we're hoping with all of those measures, that should significantly improve the, the flooding issues there.
Great. I really appreciated, um, your cooperation with the conditions on thirty-seventh Street. And the photo you have here feels like a. And the photo you have here feels like a replica of the day that I toured the site, and the same kind of flooding was visible, even though it had rained maybe a couple of days before. So the, the area, this corridor is really in need of urgent care and has been like this. It's been dangerous. It's been a safety issue for at least two administrations. And I know from just the history of speaking with the owners that there have been several promises made to fixing the entire corridor. So I appreciate that the applicant is going to do their part in taking care of the conditions adjacent to the supermarket. But we are fighting to get more on this stretch so that there is a sidewalk, given the density of Brooklyn Square and all who utilize that space, in addition to the expansion of the supermarket. So this makes for a real prime project to to see more done in that Borough Borough Park section of my district. So I am, of course, concerned and like will continue to raise the alarm on just the the necessity of addressing the entire corridor. And so would love to know from you if you commit to working with us and the DOT in any of the future conversations we have to facilitate the construction of a real sidewalk on the remaining part of the block.
So yes, and I want to just pause and thank the council member for all of the efforts that you've put in to help improving the conditions along 37th Street. So yes, we're definitely open to being part of conversations with continued conversations with your office, with 37th Street. We can only commit to the things that are applicant-owned in terms of, you know, of a financial commitment, but definitely open to to being, working together, working with you guys, attending meetings to to make sure that that 37th Street is, you know, going down the right direction.
Thank you. That's greatly appreciated. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Anief. There being no further questions, this applicant panel is excused. Counselor, there any members of the public who wish to testify on the Paperific rezoning proposal remotely or in person?
Chair, there's no one online, but if there's anyone in person here right now that would like to testify on this item, please identify yourselves to one of the sergeants. Chair, we can close here.
There being no members of the public who wish to testify on LEU's 189, 190, and 191 relating to the Paperific rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the items are laid over. I will now open the public hearing on LEU's 185. Hold on a minute.
If we could have the applicant team, it's 185 and 186. If we could have the applicant team for Boston Road come up to the table. I can't see you guys because there's a column, but I I think Jackie is back there, so. And Jackie, I need a slip from you. So the sergeants could get her one.
Thank you, counsel. I will now open the public hearing on LEU's 185 and 186 relating to the 2560 Boston Road rezoning and Councilmember Velasquez's district in the Bronx. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone the existing R6 dash C8 slash eight, excuse me, R6 slash C8 dash one zoning district to an R7 dash two slash C2 dash four zoning district and a related zoning text amendment to map an MIH program area. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to appear and submit a speaker's card. I would now like to give the floor to Councilmember Velasquez to give her remarks. Councilmember Velasquez?
Good afternoon, Chair, and council colleagues and members of the public. It's exciting to be back here for another rezoning proposal in my community. As we know from the last time, they are absolutely not contentious, especially in my district. All jokes aside, my aim with any project before my community is to consider housing and commercial projects that engage with the community, provide good union jobs, and ideally provide services and/or resources for the broader community. Essentially, projects that serve City Council District 13. I appreciate the development's team's approach at outreach within the community, which has included several meetings with relevant community groups and stakeholders, as well as their intention to partner with organizations that already serve my community, organizations that want to spread their resources within the district, and local unions to provide quality jobs. I look forward to hearing more from them about the project and the opportunity to ask questions, as well as hearing from members of the public on their support or opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Velasquez. Counsel, please call the first panel for this item.
So the panel for this item is Jacqueline Scurenci, Chris Walker, and John Valladolid.
Counsel, please administer the affirmation.
Can the panelists raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and your answer to all council member questions?
I do.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask that you reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Sure. Can we take the next slide? My name is John Valladolid, and I'm responsible for Slate Property Group's work on affordable housing. Slate's a New York City-based developer. We focus on ground-up new construction in the outer boroughs and have extensive experience on renovations and repositionings in Manhattan. The images in this slide come from one of our most recently completed supportive housing projects in the Chumont section of the Bronx. Next slide, please. We're here to talk today about 2560 Boston Road, which is located on Boston Road between Matthews and Barnes Avenue. It consists of three parcels. The largest is the existing Fine Fair supermarket site, which is where most people recognize the site. Next slide, please. Here are some images of the existing site conditions today. Really, the site is, is, in the immediate area, is a lot of, a sea of asphalt, a lot of surface parking, and really unfriendly pedestrian experience for for the residents and neighbors in the community. Next slide. What the site does benefit from is great access to public transportation. It's a short walk to the 25 train and has a, excuse me, numerous bus lines that cross directly on Boston Road. Next slide. What the neighborhood has not been well-served by is affordable housing. Since 2014, there have only been 58 units of affordable housing in this council district. This ranks 47th out of the 51 council district. We're hoping to turn that around here with this project. Next slide, please. This is our proposal. So we're proposing 333 units of 100% affordable housing. We're proposing to return the existing Fine Fair supermarket to the site. We're working with the local operator to temporarily relocate the site, the supermarket off-site during construction and come back when the building is built. That'll mean no downtime for the supermarket and the local community. That'll preserve jobs and preserve access to healthy food for the community. In addition to the supermarket, we have about 6,000 to 7,000 square feet of community facility space identified. This could be, you know, local nonprofits, medical use, childcare, those types of uses. We don't have a tenant in mind, but look forward to working with the local community and the council, and the council member on identifying tenants for the space. In addition to the supermarket space, we have also some ground floor, what we call neighborhood local retail. Again, we don't have a specific tenant identified at this point in time. We've had conversations with the Arlington Merchants Association to work with them to help identify a tenant. If there's an existing operator that's looking to grow or expand their business, we'd love to have them, but also help us identify new entrepreneurs in the neighborhood that that would add to the community. We're, we're happy to have them. And then finally, we have parking. We're returning the existing 50 parking spaces to the supermarket site, which is really important to their operations. And then, under the current programming, the site would require 67 residential parking spaces, which we're proposing below grade. Next slide, please. Sustainability is a big part of all developments that we do nowadays at Slate. This slide, this site is no different. It'll be qualified under Enterprise Green Communities, which is a national green building program that sets standards for affordable housing. Sustainable solar power, renewable energy will be onsite. Stormwater resiliency is also very important for any of these sites. That'll, stormwater detention onsite to minimize impact to the sewer systems. And then, high energy efficient, energy efficiency, LED light bulbs, Energy Star appliances, and a enhanced building envelope is really kind of standard practice nowadays to make sure we're being as mindful of our resources as possible. Oh, and last, typically the buildings we build now are 100% electric. Next slide. This is really just a slide to show the ground floor and how it lays out currently with the proposed supermarket site, the parking, and the additional neighborhood retail on the corner there. Next slide. This is the current proposed unit distribution, and we also show average unit size per HPD guidelines. So of the 333 units, you see the breakdown between studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom apartments. This isn't final, you know, we're still designing the building, but this is kind of the framework when we sit down with the architect as a starting point, and as we begin to lay out units, you know, it might change a little bit. Next slide, I'm gonna hand it over to Jackie to walk through the proposed land use actions.
So the applicant here is requesting two land use actions. The first is a zoning map amendment. The site's currently split between R6 and C81, with the C81 mapped along Boston Road, which does not permit residential use today. And then, we're requesting a zoning change to an R72 C24, which will allow the mixed-use development that John described. It'll allow for, you know, ground floor, commercial uses with community facility and residential uses above. And then, also a zoning text amendment to designate the area a mandatory inclusionary housing area. Next slide. This is just, just shows the zoning conditions today. So, you know, the C81 along Boston Road is really not characteristic of the development that's going on now along Boston Road. It's an outdated automotive use district, and, you know, the proposal will allow for the mixed-use development in an area that has a strong rationale. You know, it's, John mentioned, it's, it's in a transit zone, it's, it has really good transit access, it's located along Boston Road, a wide street to support the rationale for the rezoning here. Next slide, please. So the project will be 100% affordable pursuant, proposed through the HPD Mix and Match Program, which John will get into more of the details on the AMI levels proposed for the project. But in addition to that, the zoning text amendment will require permanent affordability, either under option one or option two. And option one would be 25% at a weighted average of 60% AMI, and option two would be 30% of the residential floor at a weighted average of 80% AMI. Next slide.
So we use this slide really to kind of help with a lot of the the conversations about AMI bands. We find that oftentimes, a lot of individuals struggle with the verbiage of AMI, really don't know what that means in like actual jobs of people they encounter in their daily lives. And when we say something is going to be for for an individual that makes 50% of AMI, or 90 or 80, they really just don't know what that means. Who does that mean? Who's it for, right? Who is affordable housing for? So we put this slide together as a way of kind of starting those conversations. All the jobs that we provide here are starting salaries for New York City employees that we, again, we see every day when we ride our bus, walk our streets, you know, or enter our classrooms. So again, an MTA, starting MTA bus driver earns $53,000 a year. That would qualify as a 50% AMI slot. I'm not going to go through all of these for you. I'll do the bus driver, and then I'll, I'll start with the teacher, or end with the teachers. Two New York City teachers, starting salary is $61,000. And if they, if they have two children, that puts them at a combined salary of $122,000 a year, which is about 90, 92% AMI. And, you know, we really believe that all of these occupations and all of these income bands really are, represent the individuals that need affordable housing in in New York Next slide, please. This next slide's a lot, and and I don't intend to go through all of it. Really, it's meant to show that when you're developing HPD-supported affordable housing in New York City, you really have two kind of options to go down. You have the Mix and Match Program and the Ella, which is extremely low and low-income affordability. Besides, if you had senior housing or very specialized housing or supportive housing, which is a different path. This is kind of bread and butter, affordable. And really, you have Mix and Match, which gives the developer the most amount of flexibility. It sets bands for a chunk of low housing, where you're targeting bands between 40 and 60% of AMI, and then you have a slug of higher incomes where you're going up to 120. So more flexibility, wider bands. On the Ella program, less flexibility and really targeted towards serving lower-income communities. It doesn't completely eliminate some of the higher-income bands. You can go up to 100% of AMI, 90 to 100% of AMI. So if you think back to the teachers that I mentioned, you could still serve maybe starting teachers, but maybe not ones been around as longer. So the two programs, you know, Mix and Match, more flexibility, bigger bands, Ella, less that, less flexibility, serving more of the lower-income bands. Next slide, please. To help illustrate what what that would mean for a sample project, we just put this slide together, which shows if you were doing a Mix and Match and really tried to do a Mix and Match that served the lower end of the bands, these are the AMI bands that you would target. And if you did an Ella kind of down the middle, almost more towards the higher end of what an Ella would allow, this is where you would end up. And on a, on a Mix and Match, you could serve incomes with a weighted average of about 59% AMI, which is close to the AMI for this neighborhood. And then, the Ella, you can get as low as 50, somewhere between 53 and 54% of area median income. Next slide, please. That's, really, that's all we had today. We had some appendix, addendum slides if there were any questions, but thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll ask a few questions, then I'll pass over to Councilmember Velasquez. I actually neighbor Councilmember Velasquez to his district. I'm the district right next to us. I'm very familiar with the area and the Fine Fair. There have been many concerns raised during the public review process about parking, both, both from voices that say there are too many parking spots being proposed and those who said there are too few. Can you expand on how and why you came to the number of residential and commercial parking spaces that you landed on?
Sure. That's a great question. So the, right now, we're proposing 117 parking spaces. The, and it's broken out to two components, the parking for the residential and the parking for the commercial. Under zoning, we're satisfying the zoning requirement for the residential, which is the 67 units at the AMI bands proposed. The commercial, we're providing parking in abundance, in excess of zoning. Under zoning, we would not be required to provide those commercial parking spaces, but we have an agreement with the local supermarket operator. We understand it's very important to his business. We want him to stay. We don't want him to leave, and that was a concession we granted while we were negotiating his, his long-term stay at the site.
Thank you. Can you elaborate on the transition plan for the Fine Fair supermarket that will be placed during the construction of this development to ensure the continuation of the grocery services many nearby residents have to rely on?
Sure. The, the existing supermarket operator... The, the existing supermarket operator, he's been on the record publicly and has attended a number, numerous community meetings with us, has identified a site diagonal along Boston Road. He owns the site. He's purchased it. He's filing building permits to renovate the site. It's a former, I believe, auto body repair shop. He's going to renovate the space, operate it in it temporarily, allow us to complete our construction, and then move back once that's complete. And then, he will own and lease out the retail on that site privately.
Okay. Two more. One statement and one question. The proposed unit distribution, I know you said that that's still open for discussion. I personally, and this is just personal, I have an issue with the amount of units for one-bedroom and not the amount of units for two-bedroom and three-bedrooms. I think in this specific community, Councilmember Velazquez and I get a lot of families that are looking for affordable housing in this community. So, I think the one-bedroom and the studios aren't really sufficient. I do know the HPD guidelines, but I just want you guys to take a closer look into that. And lastly, being that the density in this location is going to increase, this has been a long talk for, for long about the safety on Boston Road when it comes to vehicles. Being that there's gonna be more, you know, people there, children there, you know, crossing the street, Boston Road is a very large street. There has been talks of redesigning the street on Boston Road. So, I just wanted to hear your input, if you have any recommendations on how we could possibly do that, or if you'll be a part of any of those conversations.
Sure. The, as you know, traffic and is part of the environmental review process. I think one of the recommendations was that we go back to DOT to notify them when we're building, and they're gonna do some work on like timing of the lights and maybe painting or striping. And I also know that DOT do, does have plans in the works for some improvements to the Boston Road area. So, we'd be happy to work with them on, on our feedback. We have a, a traffic engineer that we use that we would love to share their comments and expertise with DOT if, if that's available to us.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Velazquez.
Hi, and thank you for this presentation, especially for the slides that indicate what AMI are, especially for folks to visualize who would fall into what category. So, thank you for that work.
That was the first time I ever seen anyone do that. So, thank you, because I think when we talk about AMI, we, we expect people to understand that. So, the way that you guys broke it down, I, I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Following up on the chair's question, on parking, what is gonna happen to the commercial spaces when the supermarket is not operating during those off-peak hours or off-hours when they're closed?
Sure, we've worked with the operator. We've had some conversations with him already to say if he would have any opposition to us utilizing those parking, for overnight parking while his supermarket's not in operation, which is not his hours. He has no problem with that, and he's willing to work with us to help alleviate parking by allowing overnight use of the, of those spaces.
Awesome. Does your team have a tenant in mind for the community facility space?
Not at this point. We're open to working with both the council member and the local community board on identifying an appropriate tenant.
And how could, besides sitting down with the community board, how can the community weigh in on the selection of a community partner for this community space?
They, they can reach out to us directly. They can reach out to your office, and I'm sure you'd be able to connect us. We would talk to any community group that's, that's interested. You know, we want our building to be, you know, beneficial and give back to the community. So, you know, we didn't have to put in this community facility space. We started with it from day one in our plans as something that we thought would be important and an ability to kind of give back a portion of the space and have space that would serve the local community. So, you know, we'd love to, to talk with tenants. And I even think we have the ability to grow that space under the current zoning plan if there's demand for more of that space.
So, your team has said that they are committed to facilitating one-hundred percent affordable housing at this site. Do you think the Mix and Match meets the community board's and other community members' desire for affordability while not pricing out current residents?
I, I do think that a Mix and Match provides us with the most amount of flexibility to serve those communities. And I do think that in New York City, we have an affordable housing crisis at every single level of income. And there are plenty of individuals at those ninety and one-hundred percent, like we showed, teachers, firefighters, police officers, which I don't think anybody would argue are, you know, the one percent in our communities that are having a hard time finding affordable housing. We also, in a lot of the communities that we do work in, we hear from individuals who have been in a community for a long amount, period of time, and they have kids that go away to college, and they come back, and their kids can't find housing locally in the neighborhoods that they grew up in. And they have their first job, they're starting out, they're starting a family, and they can't find, you know, they have, and they have good-paying jobs, too, but they can't find housing in their communities that they grew up in. They've been priced out, and they have to go elsewhere and leave the community. So, we think projects like this are the ability to keep neighborhoods from gentrifying by providing, you know, permanent affordable housing at a wide range of bands that'll be able to serve people of many different income levels.
How can your team ensure that these units are affordable to our constituents, to my constituents?
So, under HPD guidelines, again, the income bands for an Ella or a Mix and Match start as low as thirty. You know, the average, I think the average AMI in this district, if I remember correctly, is approximately fifty thousand. So, as, as, as shown, there's income bands proposed below that and above that. And on average, it's approximately somewhere between fifty and fifty-nine percent. So, I think at these bands, they do serve a large cross-section of that.
Are you willing to commit specifically to capping the highest price units at ninety percent AMI?
So, so we're committed to working with HPD on it. You know, at the end of the day, we have a financing partner who actually facilitates and pays for and helps facilitate it, and the numbers have to balance for those subsidy needs. But absolutely, we, the last thing we want is a project that has income bands that are too high and really don't serve anybody at, at that high level. So, we're committed to working to keep the AMI bands as low as possible. And I think below ninety is a very fair target for us to hit.
Can your team detail the conversations you've had with HPD to ensure that there is funding available to facilitate this affordability?
We've had very preliminary conversations at this point. Typically, the, the conversations accelerate once the project has received a zoning approval. The program that we're proposing here is protocol per term sheet. So, it's as the HP, as HPD requires them to be. So, there's no reason why this project shouldn't be. And I will also say that in the conversations we've had had with HPD, they have noted that there isn't a lot of affordable housing that gets done in this district. So, they were excited by the opportunity to bring affordable housing to a district that, you know, that's their job, to bring affordable housing to the neighborhoods that need it. And this is one that needs it and hasn't been served by it.
I have a couple of questions for you, Jackie, if that's okay. Can you explain the parking structure? What spots will be for the grocery store patrons? What spots are for residents? Will there be any community parking?
Sure. So, currently, the, the breakdown is to relocate the fifty commercial parking spaces for the supermarket, and those are at grade. And then, the remaining sixty-seven spaces are required by zoning. And those are the units that currently under the Mix and Match Program are at eighty percent AMI and above. So, so that's the fifty percent of that requirement. So, that's sixty-seven parking spaces. And then, you know, the commercial parking spaces are reserved for commercial use, but they could be used by residential use, like if, in hours that the supermarket's not operational.
So, well, is there any pricing already available that you're thinking about with, when it comes to residential parking permits or pay-for-parking?
We just haven't gotten that far yet. And that's also part of the conversations with HPD and...
The financing.
With the financing. There's all types of rules on what you could charge for and what that, the implications it has on subsidy and low-income housing tax credits that you qualify for.
Community members have raised concerns about the closure of Stop and Shop on East Chester Road. Do you have any concerns about the temporary location not being able to accommodate the influx of residents? Will this at all, change at all any of the design plans to expand the size of the grocery store in the new project? That was a mouthful, sorry. I could repeat if you need me to.
No, so, we're committed to bringing back our supermarket with the fine... We're committed to bringing the fine fair back. We've currently earmarked about fifteen thousand square feet, which is slightly larger than their existing supermarket. As I mentioned before, we have that additional four thousand square feet of what we call neighborhood retail. If the, our operator wanted bigger space, he could expand into that. At the moment, again, we held it, I don't wanna say held it away from him, but reserved it to see if there was an opportunity to find different needs for the community. And that started, you know, we started this project three, four years ago. So, if the needs have changed because of the dynamic has changed, we could definitely revisit with the operator to see if he would be interested in, in taking more if that's the direction that, that we need to have.
Yeah, I'd like to have further discussion on that, especially given a community in need. So, I appreciate that.
He's been here a long time, this operator. He, you know, committed to the site and wants to grow.
Perfect, I appreciate that. So, also, from my understanding, you've been open to suggestions for the green space on the corner. Has the community introduced any projects that you're considering right now? Anything decided?
Nothing, nothing at this point in time.
Okay, okay. And if the community does have an idea or a recommendation, can they reach out to you or me?
Yeah, we're, we're open to ideas. We imagine it's gonna be very pedestrian-friendly, seating, green. We'd also wanna coordinate with the supermarket operator, 'cause it's kind of the entrance to his facility, too. So, we don't want anything that's hurting his business, but we think it could be a good amenity and also serve his needs as well.
Perfect, thank you. I, that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Velazquez. There being no further questions, this applicant panel is excused. Counselor, are there any members of the public who would testify on twenty-five-sixty Boston Road rezoning proposal remotely or in person?
Chair, it's my understanding we have a couple online, at least three in person. So, if you wanna call them to come up.
Thank you.
And if there's anyone else that hasn't filled out a slip that wants to testify, let me just make a quick announcement that you'll be called as a panel. And please just wait to hear the chair call your name before you begin. And once you, for those of you who are online, once you're completed your testimony, you'll be removed from the meeting, but you can continue watching the meeting online at the council's website.
Thank you. I would like to call up Roxanne Delgado, Justice Faver, and Jessica Ortiz. Members of the public, we'll be given two minutes to speak. Please do not begin until the sergeant-at-arms has started the clock. The first person to go is Justice Faver.
Good afternoon. My name is Justice Faver. I'm the director of Strategic Partnership at the Laborers. I represent over ten thousand members. Over eighty-five percent of them live in New York City. Over seven, over eighty-seven percent of them are women and people of color. We stand in support of the applicant with this project. They have an agreement with Local Seventy-Nine. Oftentimes, when the discourse around affordable and union, you can't build, we believe that's a misnomer. This project will, will show that. In addition to this project, provides over three hundred units of much-needed affordable housing for members desperately needing this housing crisis. This project also provides a brand-new supermarket that will ensure food access in the community for years to come. These projects will, will provide these resources in a sustainable way. Boston Road is a model project by developing underutilized land in a way that still maintains the use while providing new housing that is accessible to transit, sustainable, and affordable. We are proud to support this project. This project, you know, obviously, we love to build, but our community matters. Oftentimes, developers or contractors come to us and would like our support if, you know, the AMI numbers are not correct, if, you know, it's gonna displace folks. Oftentimes, we stay out of those fights as well. But when we fi, when we figure things out and we believe our mission is aligned with development and responsible development, we support projects. And it's, it's a good thing when you can build affordable housing and you can, you can build with union labor on the construction side. The Laborers is a, a union that is proud of its diversity and its inclusivity and its density in New York City. And we stand in solidarity and support of this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Justice. The next applicant will be Jessica Ortiz. Jessica, you may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Riley, and members of the subcommittee. My name is Jessica Ortiz, and I'm here today representing SCIU Local Thirty-two B J. Thirty-two B J is the largest union of the property service workers in the country, representing over eighty-five thousand, eighty-five thousand members in New York City alone. Our union is in strong support of the project proposed at twenty-five-sixty Boston Road, which will create permanent family-sustaining jobs and add to a critically needed stock of affordable housing in the Bronx. Thirty-two B J is happy to show support for developers who invest in their communities where they build. And the developer of twenty-five-sixty Boston Road, Slate Property Group, has demonstrated that they intend to do so with this project. To start, Slate reached out to our union early in the process to commit to creating prevailing wage jobs for the workers who will permanently staff the site. We estimate that the rezoning will allow for the creation of five to six new property service jobs. Good jobs like this mean prevailing wages, meaningful benefits, and a pathway to the middle class for local community members who tend to fill such positions. Moreover, we need more housing to be built in the Bronx to ensure that working families are not displaced by dwindling supply and skyrocketing rents. The proposed development will include three hundred and thirty-three new residential unions, forty to sixty percent of which will be permanently affordable for low-to-middle-income families, New Yorkers and people that live in the neighborhood. This represents a significant step towards addressing the housing needs of the Bronx and the city. And the cost of li, of living rises and working, New Yorkers struggle to stay in their homes. It is most important now, more than ever, to create affordable housing and good jobs, which uphold the industry standard in the city. For all of these reasons, Thirty-two B J is in strong support of this rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. The next applicant to testify is Roxanne Delgado.
Thank you so much. Roxanne Delgado, I'm not here, I'm so sorry. Let me start again. Roxanne Delgado, I live in City Thirteen. Ms. Velazquez is my council member and also the founder of Friends of Parkway. I'm not here to cry wolf, I'm here to cry fire. As you can see in the city planning displacement map, where this site will be developed, we have the highest risk of displacement, the highest, not medium, not low, the highest. So, when we put a development that might be, put people, displace people, it's a serious issue. Well, I'm very disappointed with city planning, 'cause I thought city plan would be data-driven, fact-driven. Obviously, they're political-driven. Why I say that is because affordability. Affordability does not mean that I or other residents in that community can afford to live there. Affordable means that you pay no more than thirty percent of your income. Regarding AMI, we understand what AMI is. The condescending behavior from other people say that we don't understand what AMI. It means basically HUD determines AMI based on the rising rents in the community, not based on your income, which is why usually AMI is over twenty, twenty thousand dollars over the median income in that area. Now, regarding two hundred feet, point quarter-mile radius, half-mile radius, the median income for that area is forty-five thousand or less. Over thirty percent living, poverty-level income. When they did the racial equity report, they included the whole CB eleven, which raised the income to over sixty thousand. That's income from homeowners from Morris Park, Palm Gardens, Indian Village. But if you look at the income, even within point-five-mile radius, which includes Palm Park where I reside, it's less than forty-five, forty-five thousand. The fact is, he's saying ninety AMI, ninety AMI. Well, ninety AMI means that you have to have an income of eighty-four thousand. That's almost twice more than what is exact income. That's almost twice more than what is the exact income for the area. He's saying sixty percent AMI, which is much better, fifty thousand, which means that for a studio is fourteen hundred, for a one-bedroom is sixteen hundred, but at ninety percent AMI, that means it's actually over twenty-one hundred for a studio, excuse, and twenty-two hundred for one-bedroom. I'm sorry. Basically, I'm sorry. I'm saying that this is not affordable, and city planning had a legal responsibility to look, take hard look at the numbers, which they did not, and there's many court documents saying that they had to look at significant impact. Eighty-hundred percent influx of new population in, within a quarter-mile radius is over five percent to a community that makes less than forty-five thousand and a community that has half percent of not rent regaling, meaning that if you live in a luxury building, it doesn't matter if they build next to you, because you're protected, you have Section A, you're capped, but in a building that has no rent regulation, half the community are not protected, meaning they will be displaced, and as you can see in the map, they are at risk of displacement. This is something people don't want to discuss affordability. Like I said, AMI is determined by, not by my income, not by the community income, but by the rising rents. The more we continue pumping up the rising rents, the more AMI will keep going higher, and the more this project will be unaffordable to the community like myself. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Delgado. Can you please submit that documentation for the record? All right?
I just found out about this meeting yesterday, so I can't, I just have to print everything out, and in, there's an article that says that, how HUD determines AMI based on actual rising rents, not income, which is why it's about twenty thousand throughout the whole city, not just the Bronx.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Delgado.
Thank you so much for your time.
Just, Councilmember Velazquez, do you have a question for this applicant panel? All right. Thank you so much for testifying. I will be calling up Keisha Parchment and Michael Kais online. If you can hear me, Keisha, you may begin.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, I'm Keisha Parchment. I'm currently a resident of the Allerton Section, Community Board Thirteen, and I just want to piggyback off of much of what Roxanne has said, which is that, yes, this is, these AMI calculations are not affordable. I don't see the point of increasing density in this area if we're not going to actually address the true issue of affordability, not to mention the square footage sizes of these apartments, you know, they're decreasing across the city as a whole. We're sacrificing the dignity of these residents in order to claim that we're building affordable houses. And so I do have concerns that not only are we failing to address the true issues, but we are decreasing the, the, you know, the quality of life of our residents here in the Allerton community. And so I do have true concerns about that, as well as if these apartments are so inaffordable to the people who actually live there and who want to live here, we're going to see higher vacancy rates, which will potentially lead to this project, you know, turning to a shelter, which is the last thing that this community needs right now, you know? So for me, I do have true concerns as a resident here that this will not address the issue at cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Keisha. Next, I would like to call Michael Kais. Michael, if you can hear me, you may begin.
Hi, yes. My name is Michael Cass. I'm a resident in Bronx Community Board Eleven, and I wanted to express my support for twenty-five-sixty Boston Road. It's exciting to see new one-hundred percent affordable housing come to this part of Council District Thirteen. The proposed density is more than appropriate and will greatly enhance this major corridor. I was happy to see both the City Planning Commission and the Bronx Borough President express support for this project. Now, I understand that the community board expressed some concerns. In their letter to city planning, they were concerned that this one-hundred percent affordable development might both gentrify the community and lower surrounding home values, arguments which appear to be at odds with each other. I would argue that a failure to permit proposals like twenty-five-sixty Boston Road is far more likely to exacerbate issues of displacement and would be counterproductive. All parts of our district need new housing options, and I believe this project will be a net positive. However, I am concerned about the amount of parking that has been proposed. It appears excessive. Although the proposal sits within the transit zone, my understanding is parking was still required for a certain number of units. If we wish to further improve housing affordability, the city council is in a position to fully eliminate costly parking mandates. We should also consider parking maximums to prevent developers from making these types of concessions where they include far more parking than necessary. So I hope that is something that will be considered by the council in the near future as we reform our land use regulations. Otherwise, I look forward to seeing the city council pass this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Last call. Is there anybody in the room who wants to testify on this item? There being no other members of the public who was to testify on LUs one-eight-four and one-eight-five relating to twenty-five-sixty, twenty-five-sixty Boston Road rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed, and the items are laid over. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, subcommittee counsel, land use, and other council staff, and Sergeant-at-Arms for participating in today's meeting. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.